I call the meeting early to order. Please rise for the pleasure of the agency.
Oops, I got it. Yeah, I didn't miss it this time. Thank God.
Tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Jim Littleton of the Holly Springs United Methodist Church. And welcome back Pastor. Come on down.
Thank you for the invitation on such a beautiful day like today.
It was nice.
It was wonderful, yes. The sun came out. Let us pray. My God, we give thanks for all you do for us in our life. You give us so many gifts to solve problems and work through issues, and you've given us so much ability. But when it's cloudy for so many days, it reminds us how we're dependent on you for so many things in this life. We give thanks for the sun which came out today, which reminds us how we're dependent on you. God, we give thanks for this community and how all the people here, God, gather and work hard and do all these things to experience your blessings. Continue to bless this town so that it will be a special place in your kingdom. I give thanks for all the people who work here for the city of Holly Springs, so their labors, their reviews, their planning, their inspections, their service, the way they protect. God, they work hard to make this a special place, God, where we can experience the abundance of your grace. And God, I give thanks for the leaders here gathered who make decisions for this community. Grant them the wisdom as a guidance as they continue to lead this community forward into the future. In all things, God, we lean into your grace out of your benevolence. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Item number four, adjustment approval, the October 6, 2015 meeting agenda. Mayor Pro Tem.
Motion to adopt the October 6, 2015 meeting agenda as printed.
Motion made in second or in third?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item number six, or number five is a public comment period. No one has signed up, so we'll open and close the public comment period and go directly to. Agenda IM 6A, request communication, Fire Prevention Month. And I think the chief is here, and I think he has somebody with him that he's going to introduce later. Matter of fact, probably two people. Been a busy day, right Chief?
Mr. Mayor Council, Mr. Simmons, thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time to talk to you about a subject that I'm very passionate about, fire prevention. Fire prevention is one of the, I guess, least glamorous duties in the fire service, but probably the most important. I could throw a couple statistics at you. In 2014 nationwide, there was 3,275 civilian fire fatalities. That's one fire fatality every 2.5 hours. Residential structure fires made up 84% of that civilian death. During that time, there was 106 firefighter fatalities, 55 while they were engaged in firefighting operations at the scene of a fire. Unfortunately, this year, we've had one of those fire deaths in Holly Springs. So far this year, there's 1,700 deaths, so we're below the trend, but there's been 60 in North Carolina. So I think prevention is very important, and one of the things that I preach to my firefighters is prevention before response. If we can get out and reach people in our community and take steps to help them detect a fire early, it not only makes the environment safe for them, but it also makes our job a lot easier. So with that, this year's Fire Prevention Month theme is beep where you sleep. Hear the beep. All fire, new residential construction is supposed to have smoke detectors in each bedroom. If you sleep in there, you should be able to hear the detector. One of the things that we've done since I started here three, and almost three and a half years ago, is we started a program called Pride. It's our proactive residential information distribution effort. I set a very lofty goal when we got here to reach every home in my first five years. To date, we have visited 3,938 homes, and that's since September 20 of 2012. We've checked 907 home smoke alarm systems. Of those 907 systems, 533 had adequate fire protection. 374, or 41%, we were allowed to check did not. They ranged from bad batteries to bad alarms to no alarms at all. Now, we'll relay a little story to you. Earlier today, we had a lot of calls going on. I'm sure you guys have heard sirens up and down the roads the last few days. We've been extremely busy. I don't know if it's a change in the weather or the fact that people are getting out because of the rain. So my admin, Trish, called me this morning, and she said, hey, I got a gentleman on the phone that says his smoke detectors are beeping in his house. I said, where does he live? And I'll go check it out. It was 717 Bass Lake Road. So I went to this house, and I went in, I met this very energetic gentleman in a wheelchair, whose smoke detectors were put in in 1998, and they had not worked. So Squad One cleared up from a fire prevention detail at a daycare and came down, and we installed three detectors for this gentleman. So he is now adequately protected, so if something happens, he can get out. So during our Pride visits, we found 30 homes in Holly Springs with no fire prevention or prior detection at all. One of these was a brand-new home. We went into the bedroom of an eight-year-old child that had a hard-wired detector in it. When we checked that detector, we found that maybe some painting or some sheet rock work had been done after the people moved in, and they never wired the detector back up. So there was no protection in this young child's room. So to date, we have installed 286 smoke alarms in Holly Springs and 370 batteries. The good news with that statistic, Mr. Simmons, is that it didn't cost the taxpayers of Holly Springs a penny. All of that came from donations through the State Fire Marshal's Office, Home Depot, Walmart. Several corporations helped us out with donations of detectors. The other thing that we do is really started to gain traction is hearing-impaired smoke detectors. Now, I have a flyer here that the mayor has asked for, and I will leave some of these up here. But we offer free smoke alarms for hearing impaired. And basically, if you're hearing impaired, obviously you can't hear the smoke detector. So these detectors come with three things to help hearing impaired residents. It's a light, flashing light, a low-frequency alarm, which sometimes they can hear, and a bed shaker. The very first one of these we put in was for a five-year-old child, very beautiful little girl. And I mean, her and her little brother kept playing on the bed wanting to set the detector off because it was shaking the bed. But we've also, on a serious note of those statistics that I said to you earlier, a large portion of those fire fatalities is in our elderly community, and that's an area that we've really strived to reach out to. So we've installed two of those hearing impaired detectors in elderly residents, one of them right here in Cotton Lane. And they're very simple. The way they work is when your house smoke alarm goes off, it activates this bed detector, and then it'll start flashing the light and shaking. It's very ingenious design. So the really neat thing about this is we get these detectors free as well. So it just takes a little while to get them because we have to special order them from the State Fire Marshal's Office and have them shipped to us. But to date, we've installed three of those. Another part of this fire prevention program that makes us very successful is having someone to manage this program that's very passionate about fire prevention. And I'm fortunate to have a person like that, Joe Harasti, who was going to be here tonight, but when he told me that his daughter's chorus concert was at the new high school this evening, I told him, no, you're going to go see your daughter. And he really wanted to come. Joe has taken training to become a certified fire and life safety investigator through the National Fire Prevention Association. What that certification does is it helps us keep up with modern trends, all these statistics that I throw at you, we have unlimited access to. But one of the things that it also does, when we go through our ISO inspection in a few years, it's going to give us some really good extra credit points for having somebody certified. So a little story, I'm going to bring my friend up here in a minute to give you as a little demonstration of one of our unique fire prevention tools. Cender, our Australian Labradoodle that's more famous than me or Joe put together, has been with us for almost a year now. He turned a year old in September, so we got him like nine weeks later. Again, he was donated when we decided we wanted to go down this road with getting a dog. They had a breeder in Florida that donated us, and we were able to pick him up and get him back up here. And Cender, those of you who don't know, you'll get to see him in a second. He's great. As of April of this year, we started getting him into the public because he underwent his training, and hopefully he'll behave when I bring him up, and he'll do some of his stuff for you guys. But he has reached over 5,000 children in Holly Springs. That does not include the number of adults that he's reached. Every time Cender comes to Town Hall, no matter what office he goes to or how bad of a day someone's having, they immediately chirp up and really have a better day because of the dog. He just brings a lot of joy. The impact that Cender's had on our community is difficult to measure. In two days, he was introduced to three young ladies who have never petted a dog before due to their fear of dogs. They were able to interact with Cender and gain a new appreciation for dogs. And not only does he do the fire safety stuff, he also interacts with handicapped children. He's been allowed to interact, otherwise they may not have had any interaction with a dog at all. Cender continues to grow with his skills, and while he knows them, he's still very young, he's still a teenager, and he's very stubborn. So he gets distracted. We work with him and train with him hard, and a lot of people will ask, why isn't he staying at the firehouse right now? Well, his training regiment is so strict that if we put him in the firehouse, he may miss out on some of that training, and he will go back to his bad habits. Eventually, he will be staying at one of the firehouses around the clock. He does ride on fire calls every once in a while on the fire trucker with me, and he does very well. Like, he's staying back there and behaving, and he'll stay in the car. So he is a very, very good dog, but he needs to stay with, he usually stays with myself or Joe. Joe takes care of him most of the time, and if Joe has something to do, then he'll come and visit with me, and I spoil him. I'm like the rotten uncle. I give him table food and all that stuff he's not supposed to do.
He never did that.
One of the very unique things we just found out this morning is Cender attended the National Fire Protection Agency's first-ever Fire and Life Safety Educators Update Conference. This was a beta test conference. He gained a lot of national attention to what we're doing, and a very unique thing. During the course of this event, the North Carolina State Fire Marshal has offered or asked us to please bring Cender to the list of events and presentations at the state fair. So he will be representing Holly Springs at the state fair. So with that, I'm going to walk back and see if I can get him to come up and show you what he's learned so far, unless you have any questions about anything that I've put out.
I recognize the handler, I think. Is that somebody you know?
Yeah, that's my daughter, Sabrina. She's home from a short break from University of South Carolina.
A little wet down there, right?
A little wet.
Sabrina, nice to see you.
Yeah, two little things. We're having an open house where we'd like the community to come in and see our facilities. It's Fire Station One this Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00, and at Station Two on Avant Ferry Road from 1:00 to 4:00. We'll also be present at Sprout Fest with Cender for a little bit during the day. And we've also started our breast cancer awareness, and our model up here has one of the shirts. They're for sale at the fire stations or any of the public events that we're at. All the money goes to Susan G. Coleman Foundation in North Carolina, and it stays in North Carolina. So if you see the firefighters wearing a black and pink shirt or the battalion chiefs and chief officers wearing pink this month, that's what it's for. So any questions? I know, everybody wants to see Cender, right?
Right.
Good job, James.
Thank you, Assistant. You did well.
Uh-oh, our fleece.
Good old treats.
Cender, off there. Uh-uh. That's a smart Cender.
Nailed it.
Can you say hello? Say hello. Say hello. Good boy. Good boy. Good boy. Okay, come here. Cender, come here. One of the things that we use with Cender is when we take him out to schools, we talk to him about kids catching their clothes on fire and what you're supposed to do. So he doesn't blink in my class, so try to bite him. Cender, down. Cender, down. All the way down. Want some more hand? You want some more? Okay, down. 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 Cender, what happens if your clothes catch a fire? Do you roll? Stop, drop, and roll? No. Cender? Cender? Come on, up. Up. Okay, let's see you do the roll. Roll. Stop, drop, and roll. Roll. Okay, another thing that we do with Cender is when he goes to see kids at school, we talk to him about the importance, once you're out of your house and if it's on fire, that you don't go back in. Because, Cender, what could happen if you go back in? Do you die? Do you die? And he'll stay like we're supposed to. Cender, you mean about the teenager in him? What happens if you go back in a house? What happens? Do you die? Die. And he should stay just like that. Good boy. Now, we take him over to meet with elderly. A lot of the things that we do with him are interactive, where they actually get to touch him a lot. Did the mayor run? Okay, Cender, you give me a hug? Good boy. Hey, do you want to? You, I know. Okay? Do you want to give me love? Give me a hug? Nope, you give me a hug first. Good boy. And Cender will also check the door for heat. So if we had a door that was here, we'll ask him, hey, if you're in your bedroom and you're sleeping, the smoke detector goes off, do you check your door for heat? And he'll get up and actually feel the door. So Cender is available to come out to events if you'd like to. Contact us. Good boy. Good boy. Okay, one more. Sit. Sit. Okay, tell everybody, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I can't hear you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. You want this? Thank you. Okay, off there. Come on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
He's vacuuming now.
Thank you, Sabrina. All right.
Just some more training on.
Agenda IM 6B, request communication, Together on Center Stage. Hang on just a second. And today, I'm very proud to have a special guest. He's a star. He's a good buddy of mine, and he's in the play that we're going to talk about. He spoke with the governor about a year ago, right? Was it about a year ago? Something like that? He was on TV, and his name is Matthew Schwab. Matthew, come on down. And Matthew's going to tell us a little about Together on Center Stage.
Mayor, thank you for the introduction. And Together on Center Stage is an awesome program designed for people with all abilities and disabilities. And this is where our production is. Talks meets the Oz Wizard is a fun family show. And it's $7 for regular tickets and $8 for reserved tickets on etix.com. Search Holly Springs, scroll down to Talks meets the Oz Wizard, and you can purchase your tickets. And the program is directed by the one and only Alan Rosen, and he's an awesome guy. And the program is a really great program. In this program, we get to host two productions, one during the fall, one during the spring. And also, we have, through those productions, we create our own play. With given a title, we create the plot, the scenery, the tech, opportunities, all the play aspects we create, except for the title. And it is a fun, interactive program. Thank you very much.
I got a couple of questions for you. Are you in the play?
Yes.
And what are you going to be in the play?
I'm going to be the Tin Man.
The Tin Man. One of those big jobs, right? Are you excited?
I really am excited about that.
And you're going over there for rehearsal right after this, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We're having rehearsals today.
I'm going to be missed because I'm not going to be there, but you're going to have to help me, okay? Help me learn my lines, right? Just so you all know, there are flyers in the back on the table. Somebody put them there without permission. And the first performance is going to be on October 16 at 7:00 p.m. And on Saturday matinee, the 17th, at 3:00 p.m., right? And Saturday evening, on October 17th, at 7:00 p.m. $7, you already said, for kids. $8 for older people. Like me. All right? Do I have to pay?
Mayor Sears doesn't have to pay because he's the actor, he's playing the Wizard of Oz.
Thank you, Matt. You're a terrific guy. I appreciate it. Go back and rehearse for me, will you, buddy?
I will.
Thank you again. Let's hear it for Matthew. Anyway, Matthew is a great kid, and I must tell you, there are a lot of other kids just like Matthew over there at that play. Please come, because I will tell you one thing, I'll guarantee it. Once you've seen any one of their plays, you won't want to not go back to the next one, because it is phenomenal. That was the play. Agenda IM 6C, request communication, Town earns National Award in Communications, Joanie Powell.
I have to follow the dog in the cute.
It's a tough life, isn't it?
I am here tonight to tell you all about some news that our department has for you. We paired up with our Economic Development Department on two separate projects during last year, and both of those projects were recognized at a national organization of communications and marketing officials. So I'm here to tell you about them. There they are, right over there. Those are two third-place awards of excellence. One is for the Business Watch Newsletter, which I write with a little bit of help from Mark. He helped me with this last issue that we did. And it won third place in the nation for an external publication in a city of less than 80,000 people.
Wow.
The Holly Springs a Gold Medal Destination. Do you all remember the Partners event that Economic Development did over at Daniel Dares's? We packaged that as an event, and with the video that we did, and with the graphics and the publicity that we did before, during, and after. We put it all together in one package, and it won third place in cities less than 100,000 for special events. And there were a lot of people who participated in that. There was a huge team of staff volunteers, but then, of course, Jenny, Mizell, and I ran across Kristanovit. They handled all the logistics of the event itself. And then we had a videographer, Mark Locey, who did a video with some production assistants by me and Mark and Tamara. And Tamara did the graphics for all the publicity that we did. So it was truly a team effort, and I just wanted you all to know about it and to know that we have gone to three national conferences with this organization, and we've won three awards, no, four awards from that organization. So I wanted you to know that we're gaining a reputation, and now they say, oh, what, Holly Springs entered this year, you know? So it's kind of nice to have that kind of reputation, and I wanted to share that with you. And that's it.
Any comments or questions to Joanie while she's up?
Congratulations.
Awesome.
It is, and I think it just points out how important this town has and will be in the future too, of how important communications are. And we work very hard to keep communications open every day, every way. So thank you again. Where did you go, by the way? Did you say? Atlanta?
Atlanta. We shared those awards with the Economic Development Department. Couldn't have done it without them. They're a great department to work with.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Joanie.
You're welcome.
Agenda IM 6D, special recognitions proclamation, October is Community Planning Month. Seems like we've done this before. Gina Clapp. We have done it before, haven't we?
We have certainly done this before.
A lot of times.
This is our 15th year in celebrating either the, gosh, Community Planning Month, I think, started about six years ago in the United States with the American Planning Association. Prior to that, the designated holiday for us planners was November 8, which is World Town Planning Day. And so prior to Community Planning Month, we celebrated World Town Planning Day. And so we're always excited just to kind of bring forth to the town council, to our residents, the importance of planning and what we do in Holly Springs for our residents. And most people, when they think about planning and zoning in our department, they think current planning. And we do, we are the lead agency in Holly Springs for current planning, but we do a lot more other than just current planning review, because we love planning. And so things that we are responsible for and that we do regularly, some things are exciting, some things maybe not quite so, but they have to be done, and people don't really realize what goes on behind the walls of Town Hall. Includes addressing, street naming, mapping, zoning enforcement, issuing zoning permits, reviewing building permits. Yes, how planning department also gets involved with building permit review. We actually go out and do site inspections and verify landscaping, that street trees are in place, lighting, that architecture and site design features are all in place before a new business can open. And we also do inspections of certain residential neighborhoods to make sure that those homes are built in compliance with the approval of those subdivisions. We review and update our zoning regulations regularly. We also review and update our long-range plans regularly. We are not a town that adopts a policy or a document and lets it sit on a shelf. We call our documents living documents because we're constantly using them, reviewing them, updating them, and we keep them active and current with current trends and development happening around our community. We also get involved with many interdepartmental projects with engineering, economic development, and parks and recreation. We also are involved with reviewing and updating, and we're now working on some new policies for street trees. We also get involved with our Public Works Department with the installation and inspection of street name blades in all the subdivisions. We also are responsible for our interactive development map out on the town's webpage, which keeps our residents informed of all new projects occurring throughout the community. And of course, we also in Holly Springs do our farmer's market. So we're really excited about what we do, and we're very passionate about what we do. And some quick slides just reiterating exactly what it is that planners do. Part of our job and our responsibility is to work on improving the quality of place in Holly Springs for our residents and our businesses. We look at architecture, landscaping, a lot of community character. We're one of the few communities in the state that actually has a community character section in their comprehensive plan. We are involved with trying to make a healthy community through land use planning. We work with engineering and parks and recreation for sidewalks and greenways and multimodal transportation access. Obviously, we run our farmer's market.
In Holly Springs at least.
In Holly Springs, yes. It's very unusual for a planning department to run the farmer's market.
That's right.
It is a lot of fun. And part of that, actually, the farmer's market in planning came really as a result of the downtown, the village, district, area plan that was adopted. And one of the ideas was trying to figure out, how do we get people into the downtown area? And farmer's market was throw-down as an idea, I think, might have actually been Mr. Weeks that threw that idea out originally. But it kind of stuck around for a while, and planning picked it up, and we started working on it, and it's been a very fun activity for us. Just finishing our ninth year on Saturday. That's another presentation. Not today. We do help provide choices and different opportunities throughout the town for different types of housing, employment options. We're very excited to be having a lot more non-residential development occurring. Couldn't have done it without a lot of the work of our Economic Development Department, providing some also new shopping opportunities throughout our community, and also working with engineering on multiple transportation projects. Holly Springs, we are very transparent in what we do, and we are out in the community. We try to put a lot of information out on our webpage. What I like to explain to people now is that we have the What I like to explain to people now is that we have the What's Coming to Town webpage, where it is updated, I'll say, about weekly. Almost every week, we get new plans submitted for review. And quite honestly, it is through the webpage that I get the plans for review. So chances are, somebody can click on it before I even have an opportunity to see it. So I mean, that is really just, I mean, I'm saying that because that is just how up-to-date we keep it. It is our means of communication that we do use. We are very interactive with our public hearings on the webpage, as well as notifying adjacent property owners and our staff. Sean and Laura have really done a great job in improving the letters that go to adjacent property owners to educate them on how to approach and come to a public hearing and be prepared to make comments to whether it's the Town Council or the Board of Adjustment. And so part of that is, is our engagement that we do. We have information days, a minimum of three times a year. We go out into the town at different events to meet with our residents and to share with them what's going on. We do various homeowners' associations, call upon us to come out to their meetings. So just like the fire department is available, planning is also available to come out to different homeowner associations or community group meetings. Always well-received and a lot of questions. We enjoy going out and doing that. One of the things that planning does, too, is we work with two different boards that are appointed by the Town Council, the Planning Board and the Board of Adjustment. And we need help. We need our residents to get involved in planning for our future. And so right now, we are currently recruiting for our next round of appointments that'll actually occur for beginning in March. But applications are due December 7th, and we have openings for both Planning Board and Board of Adjustment this year. And they're very exciting boards, and there's information on our webpage about those boards. And then, of course, you know, really what we do want to do is try to get the word out that we are available to come out to community groups and homeowners' associations or property owners' associations and share the good word about Holly Springs. And of course, your planners love Holly Springs.
I recognize that photo.
And so this was taken on Jeff's last day. We have to give Jeff some credit.
That's right.
He was here for 11 years, and this is his second week, I think, in Pittsburgh.
Jeff went to Pittsburgh, yeah?
Yes.
As planner, right?
Planning Director.
As the planner.
Yes, sir.
When, I got to tell you a sidebar. When Jeff told me this about a week before the major announcement, I thought he said Pittsburgh. And I said, "You're going to Pittsburgh from here and give up this wonderful climate?" He said, "No, not Pittsburgh. Pittsboro." I said, "Oh, okay." So I got my hearing checked, and there was a little problem. We're all set. Very good.
And so with that, we are excited to celebrate another national Community Planning Month in Holly Springs.
Any comments or questions from Gina?
Do a good job.
Well, then I have to say now, we did-
Pass that along.
This is the same one you've got the last 12 years, I think.
Oh, we changed it up slightly.
Well, we changed it a little bit. So now I say, now therefore I, Mayor Dick Sears, do proclaim that October 2015 is Community Planning Month in the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Blah, 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 blah. Congratulations. Your department does a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, and so do you.
Awesome job.
Excellent.
I hope a number of people do see that presentation, you know, online or on TV, because it really shows a significant span of work that planning does.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Hank.
And it's not, and it's not just the homes and the, and, you know, businesses. It's just so much more.
A lot of background. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item 7A, this is sworn testimony, public hearing, 15 SEU-06, Homecrafted, Laura Holloman. With a new jacket. I like it very much.
Thank you for noticing.
I noticed a thing.
So the item tonight, 15 SEU-06, is for a project located within the Holly Springs Business Park. I'm at 101 Tradition Trail, which is located at the corner of Premier Drive and Tradition Trail, as shown here. It's actually, request tonight is to be located within the newly finished building that's anchored by GMA Building Supply, when they built their brand-new facility there on the corner. So as you enter from Premier Drive from Green Oaks, this is the main entrance, and this would be where the request for the special exception used to be located. So it's a request for a 2,610-square-foot business. The business will focus on offering classes on how to brew craft beer at home for personal consumption. And as part of that process, students will have the opportunity to sample beer, but more importantly, as a reason of why they're here tonight, is the opportunity to purchase craft beer, production materials, or kits as necessary to carry out their newfound knowledge at home. There will be no exterior modifications made to the building, so it'll just be a fed-up. But of course, any retail services that are special exception uses within the RT Research and Technology Zone District, they're required to go through a special exception use. Daniel Dare's had a similar process, because he has the real retail component where you can buy biking paraphernalia with that facility. In terms of Planning Board recommendation, they did unanimously recommend approval. The applicant is here tonight. He was able to give an excellent overview of the nature of his business and the scope and the thoughts that went behind that. But, you know, the board did ask how many employees, how large the classes would be, and the layout of business operations and scope. So I'll be glad to answer any technical questions, but I know the applicant is here to like to introduce himself as well.
Questions or comments to Laura?
Okay.
She's done a good job. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing and ask Adam Reinhardt to come forward. Welcome, Adam. Just for the record, name and address, please.
Adam Reinhardt, 5729 O'Vera Lane in Holly Springs.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, what was the question? Sorry.
He's waiting for our questions.
Overview of-
You want to say anything first?
Overview of it?
Tell us a little bit.
Okay. So the overview of it, we're currently in Apex right now. We've been open since April was a year. We are moving into a space that's about twice the size of what we have now. The main reason we want to move into that is we want to do what's called a Brew On Premise. It's a special permit from the ABC. Basically, what they do, nobody around here offers this, so I think it's a service that the community does want. Basically, instead of home brewing at home, the customers would actually come to my store, use my equipment, my ingredients, and brew their own beer. I can help them out, a certain amount, but there's certain things I can't do. One is pitch the yeast, because then I'm brewing, which that's, I'm not a brewery. So basically, they would, I just kind of walk them through it. And then they will actually put it into a fermenter, which is literally just a bucket. It's that simple. And we're going to have fermentation rooms, where they'll ferment it there for usually about two weeks, is the rule of thumb. They come back, bottle it, again, use my equipment to bottle it, take it home, and drink it. That's pretty much it.
It's what you do.
Yeah, hopefully. So I believe what we are, the main thing we're doing the special exemption for is to have the retail part of it. So basically, we're just going to be selling yeast, hops, grains, and then we'll be supplying the water.
Excellent.
Good, Holly Springs water.
Holly Springs water is actually, actually Holly Springs water is the best brewing water you can get. It really is. Yep.
But you're also going to be providing the expertise for those of us who can't brew worth anything.
Absolutely.
And fail miserably every time we try.
I think you have a candidate in front of you. I'm not going to mention, I'm not going to mention names.
He had me at zero.
Yeah.
You've been doing it for a year, you said, in Apex?
Yes, we're currently at Lawrence Crossing.
And is it successful there as far as the customers and everything else?
Yeah, we can't do the Brew On Premise there, which is, I wish I had known that.
Too small, right, too small place.
Too small, and it's just that, that shopping center, I don't think would be right for it, for what we're trying to do.
Anything else?
I'm excited.
I'm excited.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome to Holly Springs.
Yes.
At this point in time, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
You're straightforward.
All good?
Straightforward as it can be.
All right, go for it.
Are those keeping score? I think that's the second business that's moved from Apex.
Well, I was going to mention that, and I thought somebody was going to accuse me of being biased.
I wasn't going to.
I wasn't going to rub it in. I did that already. There's two motions.
Okay.
Motion number one.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded and administered as a special exception use petition 15 SEU-06 to allow for a retail establishment in the RT Research Technology District as submitted by Adam Reinhardt.
Second. Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Number two.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, motion to approve special exception use petition 15-SEU-06 for HomeCraft as submitted by Aaron Reinhardt dated August 20th, 2015, with the following condition: Business operations must adhere to the evidence submitted by the applicant as stated in the findings of fact submitted in conjunction with 15 SEU-06.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously again. Welcome aboard, welcome from Apex.
I'll be happy to see you.
He should be your first customer.
You've been warned.
You've been warned.
Item 8A, consent agenda, Mayor Potem.
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item 9A, new business, memorandum of understanding to market industrial property. Going to do it? You want to be recused?
Yes, I thought there was just going to be, end up being a motion there, but-
Well, she's going to speak very briefly on it.
Yeah, I just have to be recused. I work for Duke Energy.
Even though you have-
I think statutorily, I don't need to be, but to eliminate the appearance of impropriety, I ask to be recused.
Motion to recuse, Councilman.
Second. In favor.
Aye.
You're recused for just a short period of time. Thank you, Hank.
Ten seconds.
And Jenny, you're going to talk about this briefly.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. This agenda item is, presents a memorandum of understanding to you that is between the town and Duke Energy Progress. This agreement gives us permission to market an approximately 140-acre parcel of land to potential industrial clients. The parcel is contiguous and adjacent to the business park and to Novartis, making it prime for business recruitment. This MOU is similar to agreements we've had with other landowners, such as GNG in the business park and the owners of the Friendship Site. So this is similar to those agreements. And it's a win-win, really, for both parties, because we have strong relationships with the business recruitment efforts at the state and regional level, as well as with national site selection consultants, excuse me. So it exposes these sites to a greater audience of buyers, which it gives us a better chance of attracting more companies and jobs and tax base to the community. For this site, we're going to go take it a step further. I think we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. And with pre-development activities in accordance with the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, the EDPNC. They have a site certification program, which we've gone through before with the business park and Friendship. We're going to pursue that with this parcel of land. And our department's currently developing an RFP, because we're going to need consultants to support us with the checklist of all the technical reports that we're going to need for that. And John Chafano's been working with Duke's legal team to finalize the terms of the MOU. And we'll take any questions, if you have any, tonight.
Questions to Jenny? Or comments?
No comments. Win-win.
Win-win. We like the win-win. Any comments, Counselor? Okay. It must go to the motion.
Motion to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Duke Energy Progress to market 140-plus or minus acres owned by Duke Energy Progress for the economic development.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Motion to readmit, Councilman Dixon.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. I wonder if we'd ever opposed one of those.
I don't really know.
What would we do? Welcome back, Hank. Item 9B, new business, Holly Springs Cemetery Update and Policy, Elizabeth Goodson. How are you tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So tonight, we have before you a update on where we are with the town cemetery and a chance to memorialize some rules and policies to have in place for this facility. It is something we've been operating with for quite some time, but there is not an approved policy or written rules for this, so this is the beginning stage of that, and there will probably be more to come in the coming months. So in case you are not familiar, the town has a cemetery at the intersection of ARP Street and Burt Street. It's been maintained by the town for many years. And so what we have before you is a draft policy statement that kind of establishes the rules for purchasing plots, for maintaining plots, and the general upkeep of the property so that it can be kept in the nature in which it should be as a cemetery property. This hopefully will help us enforce these rules and regulations as well. I'm happy to walk through the policy statement and kind of tell you what's in it, and we will do that. And if you've got questions, feel free to stop as we go or ask at the end, whichever works best.
Go for it.
So the policy statement kind of gives some background and definitions of the words and the terms that we use within it. Generally, we have had plots and lots as two different terms that are used out at the cemetery. We now sell every grave site individually. There was a point in time we sold all of our grave sites and plots and lots of four plots. I always intermix them. I'm glad that we're no longer using both terms, but they are both referenced in here because there are times that we still reference them, because our maps still show plots of four. So the main things in this policy establish that our fee schedule is updated annually with the budget, which is what we currently do. There is a fee, not only for purchasing the plot, but also at the time of internment. Internment's the word that's used for the time of burial, opening, and closing the grave. We also are wanting to implement a requirement for a headstone or some type of marker, and so there is things that speak to that, and the timing of making sure that that's done in a timely fashion. The ongoing upkeep of the cemetery is probably the greatest need, and keeping flowers and arrangements that are placed out there cleaned up when they become faded or no longer living, if they're living, were a living arrangement to start with. I have received one piece of feedback already on this from Councilman Dixon, and so there will be a slight change that I recommend as we look at this to modify the very end of number four, to really restrict those flower arrangements that clip on the top of headstones. We were toying with whether or not, do you just remove them if they're causing impeding to being able to read the stone? And we've decided that it's probably easier just to not allow them and allow things to be placed at a plot, at a headstone or on bases or things like that. So I've got that tweak already in here. We have established that we do want to require vaults. That's a standard practice, but something that is asked regularly, whether or not we require that. We have had opportunities to be requested if we will allow cremated remains in urns to be placed in the cemetery, and they do not require the same amount of space. And so we've established that two per grave space is appropriate for placing those as well. The, the fee schedule that was adopted in the most recent budget allowed for in-town resident and out-of-town rates, and so this establishes what it takes to be an in-town resident for those things. This also touches on hours of operation and ground cover when you complete a burial. Talking about using funeral homes that are certified to do this, sometimes there is a request to not use a licensed funeral home for those kind of things. And establishes the fact that the town has the right to align the schedule the way it needs to be. Our cemetery is not very large and does not accommodate multiple funerals at the same time, although there are many times we have multiple ones on the same day. So establishes how we handle that. I think that actually also touches on once a funeral service is complete, removing the flowers and various things, tents, all of those things that are used at the time of a funeral from the site, so that they're not out there ongoing.
Okay.
So that's kind of the highlights of it. If there's questions or-
Questions or comments?[1793.11]
Yeah, how many lots do they have in there?
Aaron actually is gonna give a little update here in a minute on some other long-range plans that we have. He happens to know that answer, and I think the number was a thousand is about what we have sold, and a thousand is about what we have left.
Yeah, about half.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, so once...
Occupy.
This is a little gory question. When someone dies...
They're still there.
They don't come up at Halloween?
They don't switch out.
Yeah.
It's not New Orleans, you know.
Around town they usually pop up around...
Oh, yeah.
But can multiple people be buried in the same...
Like twelve feet?
We currently do not allow, I don't know a better term, but stacking is the only word I know that has been described to me from other areas of the country. We do not currently allow that. They are a single grave per space.
Is there a reason?
Like if you have two urns?
I mean...
Urrn's but not cast iron.
Is there a reason we...? None of them.
We've never needed to do that. We've currently still got the real estate to do it, but generally in this area, it's my understanding that it's not done as much as it is sometimes up north.
Yeah. Brooklyn and New York.
It's very expensive up north, and I think that's what people do that for the purpose of economy. And, you know, these are economically priced, so there's really no need for it.
Currently, we do not speak to it at all. It's probably not a bad item to add if we have a preference, one way or the other in the future.
The only comment I had was that I'm a great believer in having a mausoleum at some point in time.
What I was just gonna say.
Do you mean like a columbarium or...?
Why don't we transition to Aaron's update as well? Because I think he may give some opportunity of the vision of where we're...
Oh, I didn't know that.
Planning on taking part of this, and we'll continue to answer questions as you have.
Right. Thank you, Elizabeth. Come on down, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council, and Elizabeth. As stated, I'm just here to give a brief overview of the living or ever-evolving master plan for the town of Holly Springs Cemetery.
Never mind.
Oh, bad, bad one. So Holly Springs staff performed survey, and the design for this master plan that is shown here. And what I want to tell you is this is kind of an idea that we're working on as we progress through the years and as projects become funded. This plan is easily adaptable and modified. But what we are planning here are paved roads. The existing trails that you can, you know, make out when you go to the Holly Springs Cemetery will be paved. There are some erosion issues out there. We plan on working and doing some pedestrian-friendly drainage facilities, some gentle ditches and whatnot. Actually took a field trip to Mont Lawn Cemetery in Raleigh and talked with their groundskeepers, and we adapted a lot of what they told us into our design and our future plans for what worked best for certain situations. So some other highlights on the plan are the, this area down here, which is a soil staging area. It'd be screened by some vegetation or shrubs. We have about a thousand existing plots and about room for another thousand more, not including the mausoleum areas shown over on this side. Playing for an entrance feature of some sort, also some hose bibs for maintenance reasons. Now, this year we have eighty thousand dollars have been approved in the budget. We hope to do the paving of the roads, the drainage. One of the most important things are the grave markers. We've been in talks with the Boy Scouts. They've actually asked, they've, a few of the boys over there have some relatives that are located in the cemetery. So what we plan on doing is having the spots for the markers surveyed and staked by a professional surveyor. Then the Boy Scouts would come out and install about two-foot-length rods of rebar, and they'd be capped with an aluminum cap designating areas, making it easier to go out there and locate the sites for internment. As said, this plan, you know, is easily modified. And as we receive funding in years to come, we'll be presenting our plans back to Town Council each time. And we will be presenting the construction drawings for the roadwork, drainage, and the grave markers shortly to Town Council. Questions?
Questions, Aaron?
I did want to mention the mausoleums for you, Mayor. They...
I'm glad you did.
There are about four hundred units you can get. We've kind of taken advantage of the grade situation out there, which would allow for about twice as many units as a typical mausoleum. So instead of having an issue with a slope, we've kind of turned it into a design benefit, so.
One of the reasons I mention this from a personal standpoint, a lot of people that we know are being cremated, and whether you believe in that or not, some are, some aren't. But in Lappel, Indiana, where my family, most of my family's buried, the town is about two thousand population, and they have a mausoleum. So I kind of have a personal interest in something like that. So thank you for doing that. Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I do. Once, this is still maybe way down the road, but do we have a way of expanding if we need to? I mean, can you go beyond those borders that we have now? Buy and land?
I don't know that.
This one probably touches on what's surrounding it. There's residential homes along this property line and this property line. The town owns the park over here, although there is a drainage stream and wetlands and buffer down in this area. So there's not really an opportunity to expand this way currently, which was part of the reason why Aaron and Dirk also helped him with that project of looking at what are the other options. Things like a mausoleum allows some additional space and expansion opportunities.
And once it's closed, it's closed, right?
That's correct.
Okay. The other thing, what about graves above? I'm from New Orleans where you have, you know, cemeteries everywhere. What about graves above the ground? I mean, can they put like a...
We currently have not allowed that, and I don't...
It's just in ground?
It's just in-ground burials.
Well, I think since we don't have a lot of space to expand, making the mausoleum or the columbarium part a little more, how do I say this, a little more inviting, a little bit more, just where people wouldn't mind using that. Yeah, kind of incentivizing it. I know St. Benedict's Church has one. It's very nice. They have a sitting area and all the flowers. So that might be something to consider so that, you know, if people do decide, instead of burying urns, to maybe use those.
Yep.
I think y'all might want to think about considering if people want to put a monument on their graves. I think it's very attractive than just a grave.
I'm sorry, what is... Headstone?
Okay.
There currently can be raised headstones.
And then you gotta, you know, they can just be so big, right?
We do not specify the size currently.
You might want to...
Yeah, because you can...
But your plot is...
The plot is limited in size.
But you can have a, I've seen some that have like a six-foot.
Because there's such, there's quite a few graves that have been out there for a very long time. Some of the restrictions you might want to put in place would then make current markers and things like that noncompliant. So we can definitely add things like that to this policy. This is one of those areas of town that is a facility we use very often but does not have any formal requirements. And that's what the goal of this is, is get something in writing and approved. And we can clearly, as Gina talked about in the planning documents, this can be a document that is updated as we need to.
Okay.
It's the, what you started out, it's a living document, so it's something we can adapt.
Play on words there.
I think this is awesome that we're getting this.
Have you had...
The other thing is this, this is the town's cemetery. There are, you know, we're talking about, there's other cemeteries around, churches and other things that are available, you know, even if we run out of space. There's alternatives to this.
The one thing you might want to consider, and I'm thinking back to another cemetery in Remington, Indiana, where the richest person in town died, which happens, and he built a, or they built, a tower, kind of like a, it looked like the Worthington Monument.
Yeah.
It was about twenty feet tall, still is. So that's one thing you might want to think about. Maybe there is a limit that we want to look at for height.
That's exactly those kind of situations, yeah.
Because it looks like it was the richest guy in town. Sorry to say that. I'm sure he was a nice person.
Yeah, I definitely think that we, this is where we need to start because I know I'd shared some photos with you about the condition of the cemetery in general in terms of what is there, how they've been adorned, how they've been landscaped, if you want to call it that. So I think it's, you know, the town has a lot of standards for appearance and so forth, but the cemetery seems to have been missed.
Not getting that respect that we show.
So I think without a doubt, we need to, we need to do this. And I know that the agenda states that, you know, looking for direction and input, but I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion that we, that we approve Town Cemetery Rules and Procedures Policy P zero two nine.
The number may need to change. I realize that over time, that number may have been used by something else, but let's just do it without the number.
Without the number.
Policy and procedures.
Policy statement.
Yeah, that we approve the Town Cemetery Rules and Procedures with the change to number four, where it eliminates any type of clip-on, anything that adorns, it clips on or attached to any...
The revised statement for the last sentence of that would say the town prohibits of fixing anything to the headstone or marker, for example, clip-on flower arrangements.
Okay. Do we have a formal motion on this, Joni, or is this what we're doing?
We were not sure where the council would be doing, so there was not a formal one for approving the, what we had was, we wanted direction from you. If you were ready to approve it, then we are. We're good.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Second?
Second.
Motion made, second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a living document.
It's a good starting point.
Good job.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Aaron.
Good job.
You have somebody going in and put it forward.
Item nine C, new business Twelve Oaks Forest Main Repair fifteen dash oh one two. Aaron, you're back on.
All right. The Twelve Oaks Forest Main runs all the way here from Twelve Oaks on the west side of town, east on New Hill Road, shown in green here, and then south down Irving Parkway to our wastewater treatment plant. Now, a few months back, a leak was detected in front of the Public Works building by Public Works. They were able to repair a section of pipe, but it was clear that there was further damage. They repaired a, I think it was a twenty-foot section, and they could tell that further down the line was also damaged, although they did leave it, they were able to leave it for the time being. And this is a problem we see in cases where you have steep road grade with a ductile iron pipe forest main. With a steep grade, the sewage kind of tends to thin out. Air is introduced into the pipe, which corrodes the ceiling of the pipe. A TV inspection really isn't possible, given that the forest main runs fairly constantly on and off, twenty, thirty-minute sections, segments. And also, there's not really a place where you can just, there's no manholes in a forest main. It's kind of a sealed system. But from as-built data, we were able to ascertain that there's about a seven-hundred-foot section of pipe that looks like it would be in need of repair. That's the steep section of the pipe. And, you know, we recently did update our standards to require PVC as a pipe material in situations like this. However, ductile iron pipe is still, you know, definitely an acceptable application for wastewater situations. Survey and design was completed in-house by the engineering department. We were able to save about twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars. We took what we learned on the ARP Street Forest Main and Valen Ridge Outfalls, and we were able to do this one ourselves. We did get our plans reviewed by Dylan Phillips just as a good overview, but everything went well. And this new bypass, which is shown here, is how we want to proceed with fixing this problem. The section in red is that seven-hundred-foot section that's really steep. We anticipate that it's pretty corroded and the pipe wall is thinned. Construction would be kind of two phases. The contractor would install this parallel part at one point, and then one day we'd close down the road, and we'd have to actually shut down the pump station and make these two tie-ins here to the existing forest main within a few hours. So all along the way, Public Works has been invaluable and a big help. Construction is to be handled by Sanford as a change order to the ARP Street project. Public Works will be heavily involved with the day of tie-in, as we call it. We're gonna be notifying the businesses in the business park here that will be affected for the three, four hours. And that is the sewer repair project.
Quick question. Refresh my memory. How old is this forest main?
It's, I think, seven, eight years old.
Eight years old.
Yeah.
Is that a normal...
That's pretty...
Other towns are facing the same situation. The Swift Creek Forest Main up in Cary had a similar situation back in the late part of the twentieth century. You know, ductile iron started to get used instead of cast iron pipes. They're gonna be thinner, it's a little cheaper. Since then, they've started using coatings, making it better. But in these situations where that section of pipe constantly gets emptied out and is exposed to just nothing but sewer gases, it's just too much for the pipe. It is fairly common in these steep sections.
So in seven or eight years, we'll be doing this again, or do you think it's getting better?
PVC pipe?
We're gonna be replacing with PVC, which is proved to be really resilient against the corrosion. But it's not as strong structurally, but in these applications, it's the preferred material.
Educated guess on how long that'll last? Educated guess.
We won't figure.
Like twenty, twenty-five?
We have some.
You'll be in the seventies. Yeah, right.
PVC will last that long?
It's twenty-five, about twenty-five is what the vendor, but also we, this was ductile iron cement lined, and that's where the problem is. And now, if you use ductile iron, you do epoxy coated. So it's lined, you know, so if you have to use ductile for certain situations, which you do, you'll have to just use the epoxy coated versus the cement line. The cement's what gets eaten away at, so. And going forward, we don't allow that anymore. There may, like Garrison subdivision, the Garrison pump station, we're watching that one and monitoring because that one also was cement lined. So we're trying to watch the ones that are still left out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Need to do it.
Good. Go.
Motion to approve one hundred and sixty thousand in funding and contingency for repairs to the sewer forest main along Irving Parkway and a contract change order for one hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-two cents with Sanford Contractors to add the repair to ARP Street Forest Main project contract.
Second.
Motion made, second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate it. Item ninety, new business Board of Adjustment Vacancy Appointments. Gina, you're back. And you have a great planning department.
Yes, we do.
Thought I'd better put that in there quick.
We also have a great Board of Adjustment right now. Unfortunately, we received notice from Shay Malashevsky, if I can ever say his name correctly.
Good enough.
I was gonna say, that's pretty close.
That is it.
He is one of our, or was one of our in-town regular Board of Adjustment members on the Board of Adjustment, and he is moving out of town. Unfortunately, we're losing one to Cary. But this opens up a regular member position on the Board of Adjustment ending February twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen, which is the remainder of his term. And what happens when we have vacancies mid-year or midterm is we pull out the applications that we received during the last annual, what you call, appointment period, and we pass those along to you. Currently, we have one of our two in-town Board of Adjustment alternate members that is actually interested in becoming a regular member if you so choose, Richard Madoni. His term also ends February twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen, so there'd be no change to his term on the board. And he has been participating regularly and has actually been a voting member with the Board of Adjustment several times, as Shay had a lot of absences as well during his term. And so you have basically two choices tonight, is to either appoint Mr. Madoni to fill the vacancy as a regular member or to, and then he would end up having... the vacancy as a regular member, or to, and then he would end up having to then appoint another alternate in-town member, or appoint a new person as the regular in-town member.
Comments?
It seemed to make sense to move him up.
Everyone?
Would be the first step.
He's in Holly Glen, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Holly Glen.
I'll make the motion to appoint Richard Madoni as the in-town...
Regular.
Regular board of adjustment member.
He's, he, wait, has he said that he would want to be in that position?
No, he didn't.
Yes, and he resubmitted a newer application for you as well for that.
Any other discussion?
No.
All right. Motion made in second oral favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Great, and then you have to fill now the remainder of Mr. Madoni's alternate member term.
Conversation.
Well, I know Mr. Priolo has, he's had his application in for a while, I think probably from the very beginning. I don't know him, I just know him by his application right here, but, you know, I would, I would support naming him as the alternate.
I did notice Angela Anasano, that she actually, her first choice was off of a planning board, but she's, I think she was the attorney or something, I thought, and how many ladies do they have on the board of adjustment?
We do not have any at this time.
Hmm. All right. So far, we mentioned two people. Anybody else?
No, I was just mentioning to Councilman Dixon, looking through, do any, none of them have conflicts of interest or anything that would...
I would have to relook at the applications. They state that on the applications. I don't think there was any that I recognized as being any.
Okay, anybody else want to make a different nomination? We have two.
Nope, not, they all look good.
They do. Do you want to make a motion for one of the two?
Actually, the other, I don't recall ever getting applications from anyone in Parkside Village, so that would be another, another good opportunity to...
Yeah, I looked at that one, that's a good one.
Spread it, spread it out, although we don't have a quota for, you know, certain parts of the town, but it's, I think it's always a good thing whenever we can do such things.
It's inclusive.
I picked up on that when I read them.
Very inclusive. You want to make a motion?
I'll make, well, you make a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion to appoint Andy Priolo as the board of adjustment in-town alternate.
Second.
Motion made in second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We did.
Right, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
That's fine, I want to make a motion for the, we can't do it now, right?
Too late.
That's, that's fine.
It's good, it's good.
They're all, they're all good. They're all good.
Yeah, we're lucky that way, we get a lot.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jen, I'm 9E, new business, my favorite subject, ethics policy update. Counselor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It surfaces about every election time where candidates will want to cut and paste a logo of the town, and that was brought to my attention by Councilman Dixon, who expressed some concern about that practice, and, you know, while the state legislature's taken away our ability to get a trademark on our town logo and seal and whatnot, you, I thought it might be appropriate to fold into our town's ethics, code of ethics, people who are running for office, and, you know, they, in order to do that, they should abide by certain rules, and one is to not, if you so choose, to use the town's insignia and logos in any of their campaign material. You know, and I think that would apply for incumbent people as well, you know. So, it also, it also does, one of the changes says that you can't hold yourself out as a current member unless you are a current member, and that had happened in an earlier election cycle several years ago. Somebody wore a name badge that said Town Council. When they weren't a member of Town Council...
It was not me.
And that was not you, or anybody in this, anybody, anybody here. So, you know, I added that as well. So there's just a couple very minor modifications. One that, not so minor, that candidates are considered town officials during the period of their candidacy, candidacy, and subject to the policy. Policy doesn't have any criminal or civil penalties, it's really just an admonition of anything, and if it's really, if it's a really, really bad ethics policy type thing, then, you know, something bad would happen if it violates a law, gives and favors statute or whatnot, then something, then could happen, but certainly for this, the penalty would be a strongly worded letter.
So as we're rolling out our new logo, what about old, like 10 years down the road, our, the Holly sign, would they be able to, at what point does it become unethical?
I didn't, I didn't put current logo, I put logos, so I think it would apply to past or present logos, but if you wanted to limit it, you're more than welcome. I mean, now's the time to do it.
That's fine.
If you want to.
Like, like you've written.
We're good, I think.
It keeps it, especially in elections, to make sure that people are clear, who that person is, what they're talking about.
Yeah.
Want to make sure it's clear.
Other comments? Do we have a motion on this, Joni? I think we do, thought we did. There it is.
Motion, can I...
To accept, yeah.
Motion, motion to changes to policy statements, P-021.2, to the town code of ethics and conduct. We didn't make any changes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the changes.
Approve the changes, okay. That's what, something was missing.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Been a motion, do I hear a second?
Motion to approve, yeah.
Motion made in second oral favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, John, for doing that. Appreciate it. All right. Item number 10, other business, I want to start. End of October, the bridge at Bass Lake should be open. Been promised, right, Erin? Right, Erin?
You can drive over.
All right. The other thing that just happened was, we've been named the best town for jobs, I wish Jenny was still here, best place for jobs in Wake County, and that includes Cary and Raleigh, et cetera. And for any of those who want the information on that, let me know later, I've got about 50 copies I'm going to take down to Wallace very shortly. The other thing is, we have three mayors who have given three or four resolutions to DOT supporting the orange root. We just did another one. At request, the county commissioners joined us with the resolution for the orange root. And most recently, and this is very unusual, the Wake County Mayor's Association, which hardly ever does a resolution, because every mayor has to vote yes, or they don't do one. If one holds off, we don't get a resolution. They approved the orange root resolution. It has all been given to the appropriate parties in DOT, so what else is there for us to do? Wait until they get done and make sure they have the orange root as the decision. Done. Who else?
Just, just for, because this is going out, if people, if anybody watches this, we could have an explanation of what's going on on Main Street down the way there. What is going on as far as the...
Towards the bypass?
No, right out here where they're tearing up the sides of the road and it's blocking Main Street, is that, what is, are they replacing gas lines, or what's going on there?
It's, from my understanding, we talked to them, they went down Raleigh Street, and it's, PSNC is looking, I guess they have on their, sort of like their maintenance program, the life of lines where they are, and when they start reaching the shelf life for that material, they start doing inspections. So they were doing it on Raleigh Street, they actually had to go in, they found where somebody had actually bored through the edge of the pipe, they replaced that, and then they were working their way down Main Street.
It's all the same thing, the gas lines that they're replacing along there?
Understanding that that's what it is.
I think it's PSNC trucks there, so a couple of them I saw, so I'm guessing.
Everybody keeps asking, and, you know, nobody really seems to know, but, I mean, that's great, because that's a safety issue, I just noticed the thing here, pipeline safety that we have the thing there, but it's good to know that they're replacing, those are probably quite old.
What else?
That's it.
Has the tree been replaced on that little curve?
I don't believe it has, not yet. I think they're waiting till the fall.
I think they're waiting till November, October, later, later October, November.
So they planted?
Yes.
Anything else? Seeing none.
Jimmy's doing fantasy football.
If he wins that million dollars, he's my best friend.
Fantasy football.
Item number 11, managers' report.
Yes, sir, just a few things quickly. We are, several town staff members and maybe one or two council members are planning to go to the Chamber of Commerce retreat in Wallace, which is Thursday and Friday of this week. The town staff will be making a couple presentations at that event, so we'll be at that. Also, Farmer's Market is back this weekend. We had a little event last weekend, and...
It rained a couple days, I think.
It did, it rained, it rained a couple days, and I do want to thank the staff, we were very fortunate that it, you know, as much rain as we did get, you know, it could have been a more substantial rain event, accompanied by a wind event, in which case we'd have had a, it could have been a disaster here.
Oh, yeah.
But there was a lot of planning that went into preparation, and we had several departments that were involved in that, you know, and I don't want to forget anyone, but Public Works, Police, Fire, Engineering, Parks and Recreation, Public Information, those were, those were the ones, the names that come to mind, and I hope I didn't fail to mention anyone, and if I did, and of course, planning, because they had to reschedule their event as well. But just wanted to say thanks to everyone that was involved, because there was a lot of coordination. We'd, I'd gotten a call from Councilman Williams and was able to share with you some of the preparation that was ongoing, because at the time, I think when we had talked, we were hopeful that the hurricane would veer to the east, but there were a lot of hurricane models that were calling for it to make landfall. So, yeah, we prepared for the worst, and fortunately, we did, we didn't have to deal with the worst.
It was very, very good redundant communication between notify me, Facebook, Twitter, website...
Email alerts?
Yeah, I mean, it was great.
Well, I want to thank Duke Progress, too, because every time I turned around, there was a new update, which is obvious in this kind of situation, and I'm sure you guys got tired of hearing all this, because I just kept sending them out, and sometimes it was two or three in one day.
Yes.
And I compliment that company, and Marty Clayton in particular, for keeping us up to date, and I think that helped a lot of people feel better about what was going on, I guess you could say. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Counselor, closed session.
Yes, sir, I would like to discuss a litigation matter with you relative to a condemnation matter with Powell Property pursuant to 143-318-11A3 of the North Carolina General Statutes.
Is it A3 or A2?
It should be A3.
A, 1-1.
A, well, I don't think that's a, I don't think that's Roman numeral, too, I think, I think that's, there's a half of a hashtag.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
We're in closed session, thank you for coming.